In progress.
So I'm going to call the Thursday, May 16th business meeting of Borough Council to order. All right, I'll go ahead and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council President Frank Bush, here. Council Vice President Cindy Rikers.
Here.
Councilmember Ira Winston.
Here.
Councilmember Jean Burek.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Spear.
Here.
Councilmember Michael Gaudini.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Salmonsen.
Here.
And Mayor Andrea Deutsch.
Here.
We will not be having an executive session because prior to this meeting, we met briefly an executive session to discuss lease renewal terms for a tenant at 201 Savine and to discuss a personnel matter. I have no comments at this time, though I will make some comments out of the leader of this meeting, Mayor Deutsch.
The only thing is, I want to remind folks that we have Memorial Day coming up. Last Monday in the month, the Memorial Day Parade is back, and I'm very thankful to Ken Krawinski, Judy Giuliani, and John Nardi for all their efforts in keeping this tradition alive, which I think is a super important tradition. I'd encourage everybody to come out and go to the parade and honor those who've given their lives and service to our country. Certain streets will be closed. We'll put out information on that for the parade group, and just keep your eyes out for the parade.
Yeah, I'll note that it's traditional for the Borough Government to march in the parade, so.
It is.
Councilmembers, you want to talk to me after the meeting and we can confirm who can make it.
Traditionally Borough Government does walk in the parade. Also, at 11:00 a.m., there'll be a service at the War Memorial honoring those who've given their lives and service to the country. So I would encourage all of them to come and pay their respects before they celebrate for the holiday. I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Mayor Deutsch. Let's move on to public comment, which will be three minutes. Please begin by stating your name and your address. Anybody in this room wish to make public comment? Okay, go ahead.
Hello, everybody. My name is Nancy Green. I'm married to Peter Grove. Some of you know him. The reason I'm here is to express my serious concern about pesticide use in the borough. In the last week or so, both properties on either side of me were sprayed, one by Savitri with garlic guard and the other by mosquito authority by, I'm not sure, but when I called the man, he said he uses Larvicide. Both properties will be sprayed again. As you know, Peter is working on the stream trying to create pollinator pathways. It's really created, but we've seen people come down in Norbert, in Norberg Park, and spray their properties, and the spray wafts over. There was a fish kill this morning. Peter wanted me to tell you this, and I want to ask you if the borough could look into this and decide what to do about it, because I feel like I'm a non-smoker in the world of smokers. I don't know how to get away from it. I don't like the idea of children playing on properties that have been sprayed with insecticide. So that's the end of my statement, but I'm hoping that you'll be able to do something, investigate, or decide what rules you want to put, or whatever. But I don't like the pesticides.
Thank you. I'm not sure what exactly the borough's role could be in this, but it's been brought up by others.
You're not supposed to spray in the leaves of trees, and I know that's what they're doing.
I just got an email actually two days ago, and the other side was concerned, resonant too.
It's been on social media too.
Anybody else in the room wish to make public comment? Okay, we'll move online. Okay, I see. So please raise your hand if you wish to make public comment. I can see Ms. Scanlon has her hand raised, so Carol Marie Scanlon, why don't you go ahead with your public comment?
Yes, Carol Marie Scanlon, Savine Avenue. So I was listening to the recent Planning Commission meeting, and Planning Commission was talking about recommending low-income housing, and they were mentioning on Montgomery Avenue, somewhere on Montgomery Avenue. How does this propose, and then you're going to talk about zoning changes and recommending for affordable housing or low-income housing. How does that affect Savine Park? Is that the, you know, what they're looking at, the location?
That's not on council's agenda right now, Carol Marie, so I would recommend you ask Planning Commission. It hasn't come before.
Okay, so then, so then, the goals and objectives that you're going to be talking about puts the future of 201 Savine as a high priority, and there was, Jim Spear had posted on social media in a thread that Savine Properties, a plan for Savine Property would be released soon. Is that being released soon? Do you have the plans for the property or the RFP, you know, progression on that?
So the topic that's coming up is setting, discussing what our future agendas are going to be. So it's going to be a topic in the future. We have not yet discussed it. There's no news on 201 Savine. There have been no real discussions.
So the RFP is not written, has not been worked on or developed?
Not since before.
No, not since, not recently. I mean, nothing new.
Okay, so last time it was worked on was like last May-ish, is that when it was?
Last year.
Okay.
When this, when 201 Savine comes back onto our agendas, it'll be, it'll be on the agenda of the public, we'll be announcing it. So this is an agenda-setting exercise that we're talking about later today. It is preparatory to discussing the actual issues.
I'm sorry, it's?
It's preparatory. It's in advance of discussing the actual issues. It is determining the agendas for council for coming up this year and next year.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Ms. Scanlon. Is there anyone else online who wishes to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none. Kim, did you want to make a public comment? You just walked in during public comment.
Sorry, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close public comment then, and we will move on to our consent agenda. Someone like to make a motion?
Do we move for all three or one at a time?
There's probably, is there a motion sheet for it?
Yeah.
It's not assigned. All right, well, Jim, I think you've volunteered.
I move to bill council through the consent agenda items.
Okay, A through C.
A through C.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion of the consent agenda items? Okay, we are voting to approve consent agenda items A through C. All those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. Let's move on to our consideration items. 9A.
I move the Borough Council through Resolution 2024-010 for the requested waivers granting preliminary and final land development plan approval for the 230 Haverford and free development project.
Second.
Okay. So now I do wish to make a brief statement. So Mayor Deutsch and I just have been working on a few words. Again, this is, there's only, we continue to hear concerns from neighbors and residents about sort of some of the other developments that Mr. Ruben has been working on. So tonight, Borough Council will be voting on a plan to redevelop many of the properties formerly owned by the Cook family on the south side of Haverford. So Mayor Deutsch and I have been talking about some of the community concerns about the properties at 100 Forest and 203 Haverford and the steps that the Borough and Mr. Ruben are taking in response to these concerns. So just looking at the big picture, while our residents are really the heart of Norbert, the downtown area is our center, and it's anchored by a number of small businesses that need foot traffic. For these businesses and our entire downtown to thrive, we need lots of people walking by continuously, which also means we need lots of active storefronts for people to visit. That's why our zoning for the downtown area specifies ground floor retail and also allows for residential units above that retail. That's why we're excited to see new projects to revitalize this area and bring in new residents to patronize all of our businesses, because the downtown works best when it's buzzing with activity. I see several small business owners in the room right now who can attest to that, I'm sure. So keeping those goals in mind, we also need to make sure that the downtown remains a vibrant place as new projects proceed. So many of us had a lot of time on our hands during the pandemic, so we could observe the leisurely pace of construction at 100 Forest and 203 Haverford. Now, much of the delay had to do with the pandemic. However, there have been other issues that are visible to anyone walking by. Sidewalks that have been taken out of commission for long periods of time, quality control problems. Our planning commissioners and Borough staff have identified materials being used in construction that are different from what was in the approved plan. So Borough staff have been working closely with the construction team to address these issues as they have arisen. The Borough has stepped up its inspections of the work in progress, including a close analysis of some of the brick facade, which is ongoing at this time. And as a result of these issues, we've also been working closely with Mr. Ruben and his team during the planning process for this current project, 230 Haverford, to prevent these sorts of problems from happening in the future. So members of various boards, Borough boards and commissions such as the Planning Commission, the Historic Architectural Review Board, the Shade Tree Commission, along with Borough staff, have all worked with Mr. Ruben's team to collaborate on ways to ensure that the proposed construction project runs smoothly. This topic came before council at the conditional use hearing earlier this year, where Mr. Ruben's team agreed on a number of conditions above and beyond the requirements in the Borough Code that they'll be required to carry out if the project is approved. Just summarize a few of the relevant conditions that we are considering tonight for this project. The exterior facade will be constructed using the same materials and design as approved in the plan, and purchase orders for exterior materials will be monitored by the Borough. Extra money will be escrowed with the Borough to ensure that these exterior facades are constructed according to plan. Mr. Ruben's contract with his general contractor will specify a reasonable length of time to complete the project. Construction vehicles and equipment will not be parked in public areas without the permission of the Borough. And no demolition, building, or grading permits will be issued for the project until the public improvements for the ongoing 203 Haverford and 100 Forest projects are complete. So public improvements are things like sidewalks, stormwater systems, and other work in the public right of way. In addition to these conditions, the Borough has inspection powers to make sure everything is completed according to code, and we'll use them. In particular, our Borough Engineer and our Code Enforcement Officer will be working with Mr. Ruben's team. So it is in everybody's best interest that this project be done well, and that it serve to enhance the experience of everyone who lives, works, and visits our community. So the buildings that are proposed to be replaced are about 100 years old. Our hope and desire is that Borough leadership, Borough staff, and Mr. Ruben's team can work together to ensure that this project has a positive impact on our community for the next 100 years. Thanks for indulging me here. So it's a big, a big project, so that's all the forewords were necessary at this time. So proceeding to the matter at hand, 230 Haverford. Do you want to walk me through the, walk us through the steps that we should be taking here, Mr. Walker? I know we have to vote on the waivers.
Well, there's no right or wrong way to do anything, but it is very common for the public and for a governing body to address waivers first, just to make sure they understand what the waivers are, because in approving or not approving a plan, if it is approved, it also be approving. If we're not approving those waivers and the way the resolution is set up, there's an opportunity to approve or not approve each waiver. So if council wanted to, we could go through each waiver, see if anyone would like to have any comments on those waivers, and if not, take a vote on the plan together. If approved, to approve with waivers, or if there's a desire to treat the waivers individually, you could do that as well.
Okay, so we, if we wish, we could just vote on the plan and the waivers all as one fact?
Correct.
All right. Take a quick look at our, see how long we do. Get to the waivers page here.
Page seven.
There are nine.
Maybe it would be most efficient if there are council members who have any issues with any of the waivers.
Do we need to read them aloud?
Again, there's no requirement to do anything. If there was something that people wanted to discuss, some of the waivers are connected to some of the conditions. For example, there's a waiver requesting for transportation impact fee, sorry, transportation impact study, however, there's a condition to pay a fee in lieu of that study. Same goes for a waiver related to dedication of recreational land, but there's a condition to pay a fee for that as well.
So these waivers have, I don't think there's anything new in these waivers. They've all come before council. And does anybody have any concerns about any of the particular waivers that we should discuss at this time?
It's not really a concern, but I know there were some changes since the last time in the waivers around, around the bike storage, and I just want to make sure that the bike experts are satisfied with those changes.
So there was a lot of back and forth with just trying to get more clarity on that, and I'm satisfied first. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, did you hear that?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Say it again, Jim.
There was a lot of back and forth and talking with John, and I don't have any further questions on the waivers.
Okay, Rick.
And actually, four of the nine waivers relate to the modifications used for the bike configuration.
And the main concern initially was accessibility for the bike storage, for both the long-term storage and the cargo bike lockers, but I think that was addressed between the staff and the applicant since then.
So this is new, new legislation, the bike rules are, this is the first big project that has to really grapple with those, so it's not surprising that there are waivers being requested, there are issues being worked out for how to, how to handle them. Okay, any other questions or concerns about the?
My understanding is the net effect of it is that it's really just a difference of one space, right, overall, from what the code would have otherwise required? We've just spread it out in different areas, but it's really just the difference in that one.
There are bike spaces that are being, bike shed, not bike shed, but bike spaces that are being held and preserved that could, could go in.
Right.
That is not really related to these waivers. These waivers, and really, they're only partial waivers. They're not saying, you know, we're not putting in cargo bike lockers. We're saying, can they do 40 inches instead of 42, or 46 instead of 48? So we're only talking about two inches, but still, those two inches don't meet the code. But the applicant does submit a waiver letter establishing why they believe each of these are hardships and why what is presented is sufficient for the purpose.
Okay.
My only question was, I thought that the waiver E that was listed was actually, I thought I saw like that that one actually was, had been removed, but it's still in the backup, so I wasn't sure if that was.
The waiver that was removed is related to the, the.
Right.
Well, technically.
But it's still, I think that one's still shown in the back. So I wasn't sure if that was just a, it hadn't been updated or.
That is not the final version of the draft. I have waiver E being bike racks to be located, at least there's sufficient.
But the old E is gone. The old E is gone.
Okay, so I'll need a new version of this. This has got the wrong, or can I just cross it out?
For general.
Okay, for me.
Yeah, I think we just didn't get the update. We got the note that it was being removed, but we didn't get the update.
All right, and that's because the plan has been updated, and you no longer need the waiver for that, applicant no longer needs the waiver. Okay. All right, I mean, there are, there are some new conditions in here as well that have been worked out. I mean, there's, there's the conditions that we had as part of the conditional use hearing, and in addition, there have been some, some new conditions.
A lot of conditions.
Yeah, a lot of conditions added this time. And maybe I'll just ask if council members have concerns about any of the new conditions?
I think we should at least summarize them since we, in our conditional use hearing, we went to great lengths to inform the public of all the things that we were doing to ensure the conditions, so I think we should go over any new conditions that we're imposing just for the public. It's a big enough project.
I'm happy to do so, and again, whatever there is any project approved, it's always approved pursuant to conditions. A lot of those conditions, I call them standard conditions. Every applicant that has a plan approved has to comply with the township engineer, fire marshal, zoning officer's review letters. Same as in here, they have to undergo an enter-to-land development agreements and stormwater operation and maintenance agreements. They have to post escrows. They have to post escrows for inspections. That's the same as in here. They have to comply with any outside agency, whether it's the DEP, PennDOT, not that it applies in this situation, to get all of their outside permits that they need to have. So all of those standard conditions are in here, but there are many, many numerous other conditions are specific for this project. For example, there are at least six covenants that will have to be entered into as part of this particular project, not just the stormwater maintenance agreement, but a covenant to maintain the landscaping that's being installed according to the plan, so we can't prove the plan and have them come around and rip out everything that they promised that they would put in. There are the covenants that were discussed at the conditional use hearing related to the green building requirements to make sure, again, that future landowners can't take that out once they've gotten the third floor benefit. They wouldn't be able to do that according to our covenants. There's a cross-access and shared parking agreement easement with the properties that many people consider to be the same property, but it's not, that being the little gym building and Revival's building, to make sure that there's sufficient parking for those projects as well and those that reside or work in those buildings. Part of this project, and I think the council and the public was excited about, was the idea of having the, the area, it's been called a plaza, it's been called a courtyard, but that area for public use between the buildings and opening that up. They're going to enter into a covenant or declaration of some sort or an easement that, that has to remain open to the public and accessible, and they'll, they'll maintain that, as well as that little grass area that we'll sort of have to define a little bit further on the plan, but the defined grass area along the train tracks from North Harbor Avenue through to the parking lot. Again, did that maintain accessible to the public? Other specific conditions require, require the financial contributions. We've discussed the $7,500 for the fee in lieu for the traffic impact study. It was discussed at the conditional use hearing and again in here, at a contribution of $25,000 for improvements to the station circle area in lieu of the fee for dedicated, and dedication of open space. An additional $4,200 under our code to go towards stormwater inspection and maintenance costs. As mentioned, President Bush, there's a condition that they are not to obtain any demolition, building, grading permits until those public improvements are installed and approved by the Borough for the ongoing projects of 203 Haverford and 100 Forest. There is the condition, that was the recommendation of the Norbert Borough, the HARP Architectural Review Board, related to the taking reasonable efforts to remove storefronts that will allow any surviving historic finishes to be seen by the Borough and documented before any demolition takes place, to make sure that, if there is anything of particular interest, that it's documented prior to any demolition.
Can we figure out who's going to document that?
Well, the photographs were taken by the applicant, and they've taken photographs of the inside of the building already in the private borough, however, it's requiring to make sure that the Borough knows when that's going on, so there's no mistake as to happen somebody there and seeing it. There are, one of the changes that's being made is a condition that the waste hauling trucks, or those waste hauling trucks are going to be entering from Haverford Avenue, and then now expand the driveway from Haverford. They're not going essentially the wrong way off the station circle, and they're going to make sure that that is maintained wide enough to allow that to happen, that the maneuverability diagrams, I should say, that they presented will actually work. One of the more, I think, specific conditions that was put in place in an attempt to address some of the comments of concerns of the Planning Commission, and to ensure that what is being shown in these plans that the public has seen and has liked is actually constructed that way, is that there will be an additional covenant that will require a facade to be constructed as shown in these architectural renderings and using the same materials that have been presented to the HARP. And attached to this resolution are both those renderings and those materials incorporated, as you said, so there's no mistake in what, what those may be. And they will agree to have those installed, those architectural links installed as it should be and as they proposed. Additional conditions, there's some discussions with the Shade Tree Commission related to the existing shade trees on Haverford Avenue. Those are to remain, however, if they were to become diseased or dying, that they then be removed and replaced by the applicant at the applicant's cost. They're also permitted by the Borough, if there was this sort of little voluntary agreement in Haverford, if the Borough wanted to just replace those trees, the Boroughs would be able to do that as part of the project. At Borough's interest, but at Borough's choice. They will be proceeding as originally discussed with the June 29, $2,100 purchase option agreement, which would then transfer the ownership, as they have right, have transferred to them, of the Borough Municipal Parking Lot. That has to occur prior to them recording this plan. And I think, again, the other condition, which again is a standard condition, which just to make sure everyone understands the process, there are still going to need to be technical revisions of the plan to satisfy the engineer's comments, the owner's comments, those conditions, and they need to do that, and it needs to, again, be formally approved, signed off on by Borough Engineer, and then the plans by Borough Council before that plan is actually approved. And that's very common. No plan is perfect when it's approved. It should be perfect when it's ready to be approved. So just like every other plan, every other municipality, it's following that process as well. This will be signed off on and accepted by both the applicant, who is a different entity than the landowners. Both aren't him as a person, but he was signed off for both of those, and will be binding in the running for the vote. In addition to what's in this resolution, what references it, after this, if they're ready to proceed, there will be a land development agreement, which will dictate the process of demolition, building permits, and for them to put up the requirements of financial security and make sure that the improvements can go. And there are additional conditions in that agreement, but they're echoed in this resolution, that during that time, they have to make sure that there's proper pedestrian access, vehicular access, safe accessibility through, through the area.
But you have that for anybody?
For anybody. Everyone has that standard condition. Actually started, yeah, we started with that. And also, as a result of that, there's conditions related to parking for workers, sanitation facilities, obviously to make sure that the front doesn't make the rest of the surrounding area dirty, no destruction of vehicles taking mud onto the roads and such. Again, standard conditions and other, other requirements. Again, standard conditions and other requirements and things we're still going to need to do between covenants and land development agreements and cleaning up the plans to get it ready for a final step.
Any questions?
No, I just thought it was worthwhile going through all these for the public again because we all know, we've been hearing a lot about construction projects, two existing ones. I think as a new member of council, you know, we spent a lot of time to make sure that we've done everything we can to keep Tim on a tight leash. I guess this is the less way to put it. Probably a tighter leash than you want to be allowed. I hope you understand the differing objectives that we face here. My guess is that 29, I count 29 conditions here. My guess is that that is significantly larger than usual.
It is significantly larger than usual. In addition to that, just to make sure there's no mistake, there are then the additional 16 additions from the conditional use hearing that still apply. Now, there's a lot of crossover. It's the same, but some of the unique conditions.
Any other question on the conditions?
Ask a question about condition Z, which is references plans presented during the plan approval. Do we have a definitive set of those plans? Which set of plans does that refer to?
The, those would be the building plans. We're talking about the facade.
Yeah.
So, no, right now, there's the civil cycle plans. Then there's going to be building plans to show the interior and the building materials and such. So the building plans need to be cross-checked with the actual facade renderings to make sure that what is going to actually follow by the builders to put up will end up looking like what's in the pictures. Now, we also then have borough's buildings, so here it is, has someone on staff and special expertise to be able to review those plans, to make sure that what's on the renderings is not actually what's on the building plans. And then it will be installed that way. In addition to that, there's the conditional use condition that those materials need to be reviewed to make sure it's for our materials before they
Yeah. Well, the reason I ask is because the latest set of renderings I saw for the renovations were not. We had some errors in them, I think. Now, they didn't show windows and the stair tows and everything. Various things about them are not up to date. So as long as we have a condition that states that we're going to hold them to a particular rendering or make sure that that rendering is accurate and the attention.
And we could always agree to amend it, but to be clear, the renderings are usually done more for a certain amount of I think what the planning commission identified as important architectural features, including the masonry view features, the window detail, lighting fixtures, and even sort of a lot of the signage that adjusts the dimensions or the look of the front building. What it doesn't cover are things like where's the door? If the door is on the left side of the building, it could be moved to the right side of the building, as long as it still meets our code. Maybe there might be some additional windows, but as long as it's not, it doesn't remove the important architectural features for this building, there's still some ability there to adjust.
Mr. Carr, since you have a comment on that thing?
The renderings that have been filed with the borough are the accurate current renderings. The issue with the window was, we got off the rails of less mean was it was that one particular perspective didn't show the window. That was all. It was there and it is there. It's just in that one perspective it wasn't there, then the meaning got put all sideways. So Mr. Walco was given, for me, the most accurate up-to-date renderings that we've filed with the borough. So you have them.
All right, I see no other comments about the the new conditions. Does anybody want to say anything more about the project in general? I mean, I don't believe we have anything else we need to go through before the actual vote, but this is a big project. So if anybody wishes to say a few words.
I just want to give credit to all of the different borough boards that have kind of put their input and the community has also come out with their concerns and really kind of put their feedback into the project. And I also want to give credit to the applicant because pretty much everything we have asked for, we have addressed in some way. And I think that shows a lot of commitment to the borough, so.
You know, I just remember one thing. One of the conditions I think is that in general, we're going to have the construction to the extent possible, the construction trucks and vehicles and things are going to be back in the parking lot. Because I know a lot of people, I'm getting complaints at least about a lot of the construction folks parking in the up here or up along the area there instead of down in the parking lot here.
We certainly have those conditions in place and obviously sometimes they're going to be using vehicles for work.
Right.
But the, their personal vehicle parking, that will be set as part of a pre-construction meeting with borough staff to address this issue.
Thank you, Gene, for calling out the team effort and partnership that has made, I think is going to result in something that's going to revitalize our downtown. You know, comprehensive plans that we want a business district, well, we need more people to have business district. And this was the biggest test that we're ever going to face as council members in just 100 years. And I think that we're going to end up with a really fabulous, vibrant downtown. And this was the time we're either going to sunset small businesses or invest in the next 100 years. And we did that with lots of bumps and twists and turns, but I'm excited to vote.
Yeah, it's going to be good to have a mix of uses there, additional residential uses to be able to support our commercial businesses. It's a great location for it, right in the train station. And, you know, it's tricky when you have an existing site and footprints that are existing and you're trying to design a site to fit into that, but with codes that were designed after that site was initially designed. So it's a tricky situation. Layer on top of that, the fact that, you know, three-story mixed use is not a is not a typology that you generally tend to see out in the world. So I think, yeah, it's definitely, it's something that I think was tricky to get where it went. I'm excited that we've gotten there and that we have a good mix of uses and hopefully we'll bring some more activity back in downtown Harvard.
I think over the course of this project, we've discovered lots of code complexity that we didn't know was there from our historic, from our HARB, from our, just a variety of different code changes over the years. Our planning commission has asked us formally to fix code based on lessons learned from this project. It's been a very complicated affair. And I also want to thank the applicant for working with all of our various boards and commissions and the council's thoughts to change the project to something that I think has, reflects community input and that reflects our goals and values here in Harvard. And I'm also pleased to vote on this. So with that in mind, the motion on the table is to approve Resolution 2024-10 with the request of waivers, with all of the requested waivers, granting preliminary and final land development plan approval for the 230 Havreford Avenue redevelopment project. So let's vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, it is unanimous. Congratulations.
This is also our first green building.
Believe so. I believe it is the first building that's using the green building requirements, the bicycle requirements.
Most significant in Harvard.
Yeah, Harvard, this is the biggest thing Harvard's been involved in. So a lot of borough policy for the last several years interacting with it.
It was my first Zoom meeting after the pandemic. So I've been meeting since March of 2020.
It's a long first.
It's a long process.
Can I just thank everybody? I want to thank the public. I want to thank all the governing bodies. I certainly want to thank my team. I don't want to be repetitive. It's all been very well put. It's been quite a journey. It started with a completely different concept. I think where we ended up is going to be amazing. There's been twists and turns, no doubt. It's been new for all of us, I think we would agree. It's not the hugest project relative to other things happening in the world, but it's big to Norbert relative to the scale of the borough and it's very high profile. So I understand the need for the conditions and I understand everything that's happened. I just want to, again, thank you and just, I'm excited to turn the page. And it's been, there's been a lot of anxiety for all of us, a lot of stress. It's been quite a process. But I'm extremely excited, optimistic, and ready to get going. So again, just thank you, everybody.
So when's it going to be done?
That lasted that long?
You don't have to answer that.
I just want a tour of the green roof when it's done. I really am intrigued by it.
You can mow the lawn on the green roof.
As long as it's safe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next line of business, it's anti-coloniality, yes. Is 9B, it's a Safe Streets application. Safe Streets and Roads grant application to Lower Marion.
This is your hard work.
I move that Borough Council submit to propose Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant application in partnership with Lower Marion Township to be used towards the proposed Montgomery Avenue Corridor Traffic Calming and Safety Action Plan and recommend that the borough contribute $7,500 towards the management partner.
Second.
Okay. Do you want to, who wants to discuss this?
I wasn't at that meeting, so. There's an intermission.
I think it's on here, Gene.
Yeah, so Lower Marion Township came to Norbert and to, because they were applying for the federal Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant. And this is to be used for all of Montgomery Avenue from Upper Marion to City Avenue, so the entire length of the road. And for Corridor Traffic Calming and Safety Action Plan. And so the plan will include an analysis of the corridor including land use, density, traffic, data, crash speed, pedestrian movement, those kind of information. And when it's complete, it will provide a comprehensive list of recommended short-term and long-term infrastructure improvements that will prioritize pedestrian safety and particularly the safety of our youth pedestrians or on others coming happening. So the proposed plan is also aligned in coordination with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission and their SS4A Safe Streets for All funded Regional Vision Zero 2050 Action Plan. That's a mouthful.
The vision zero is zero, the goal is zero fatalities, traffic fatalities.
So this is really focused on pedestrian safety of our users. And so the township is partnering together with Norbert Borough on the grant application. They are putting in a total, together, we are putting in a total of $80,000. And Norbert's part of that is $7,500 and the project total is $200,000. So, and we have been talking about this for decades in Norbert Borough. So I'm really excited about this coming forward and I think it'll be a great thing that and a lot of good information will come out of that in terms of what intersection improvements we can implement. It looks at six different intersections in Norbert and out of the total of 33 along Montgomery Avenue. So, and we reviewed this at the Public Health and Safety Meeting on Friday. Brandon Ford, the Assistant Township Manager, came to that meeting to give a presentation and answer any questions that we had.
And add you this up for money.
Yes. And the community unanimously decided to do that and
To recommend.
To recommend putting towards the $7,500 and partnering together with the township.
And we should just say that the $7,500 is essentially a per rata. It's per rata distance of our part of Montgomery Avenue to the whole project. So it's a per rata. In essence, a per rata contribution. They wanted, they suggested more and Fred did the math and was physically prudent and said that, you know, basically we were asking for a larger contribution or higher than above what our part of the roadway is covered. So thanks, Fred, for doing that. Figured out that we could save some coin by telling them that they were asking for too much.
Always happy to do that.
And so, so it will be an ongoing, if this grant were to be awarded, the plan would start sometime, the planning process would start in 2025. And then the borough would be involved in that whole planning process as well.
And just a point of clarification, that $7,500 would also be in 2025. So it's not $7,500 that we have to find in 2024, in the 2024 budget.
And it's also only if they get the grant.
Yeah, it's only if they get the grant.
My coworkers at the other side of the queue for me has been living this grant application for the last about two weeks.
We do want to thank Lower Marion for doing the grant application and doing the lion's share of the work here and bringing us in as a, as a partner, but we'll benefit from this, but not necessarily doing the work, which is always a part of it.
Notice that when you have a grant application that's multi-municipal, it always makes it ultimately stronger applications.
And that's one of the things you said to us is that there's a greater chance of getting it.
As a matter of public safety, I think this is money well spent. It's a zero, you know, question as to what, whether we should do it. This has been a challenging corridor for my whole life and
Did you get, well, you know, you had your shop there. Did you have any?
I had my shop there. I mentioned at the, at the meeting, once or twice a year, I would hear these giant crashes and come out to find horrible vehicle accidents right in the middle of, at least twice a year. It's just a regular occurrence out there with the speed of traffic despite the 25 miles an hour in our corridor. It's never followed. And so analyzing this for both pedestrian, cyclist, vehicle safety is in the interest of everybody because everybody in the borough uses that corridor, probably multiple times a day. And it's in everybody's interest to increase public safety in all forms.
All right. So if awarded, does the grant provide money to implement the changes or is it just a planning grant?
This is just planning. So it will identify specific detailed plans for intersection improvements, safety improvements, things like that.
So potentially down the road, they'd be looking to us to cost share on the implementation of the intersections that are in Norbert if that thing becomes part of the
I do believe there's funding available for that, like for grant funding.
Oh, I'm sure there is, but that's not.
Yeah, it's a little later.
I was pretty sure I knew the answer to your question because how would you know how much to ask for without planning?
And it's probably worth pointing out that even though they paused the expansion of the walk And it's probably worth pointing out that even though they paused the expansion of the walk zone, that was very deliberately, I understand, when LMSD changed the walk zone. It was very much a pause, a suspension of the plan. It may be revisited as soon as next year, so it's really important to know.
But what was the timing of that? Did they?
They were gonna do it in the fall.
No, no, I meant, did they pause it, like in the middle of this grant application?
No, 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 no. There was huge pushback.
No, I know that, but I'm just, that wasn't my question. What, did they assume the pause that the?
Oh, I know.
Hopefully, you know, they would have to quickly change their grant application.
I think they're, well, yeah, so they didn't, the grant was not in the works. It actually came out very quickly in the last couple of weeks.
Oh, I see. So they already knew that pause.
And, like Mike said, that might come back in a year. And one of the main concerns that people were voicing in opposition to the extended walk zone were safety concerns and that, especially around the median. And this gets to be Lower Marion's problem, where they were having to change the grant.
And when I specifically inquired, because there are parts of the sidewalk in the borough, where the sidewalk is like this, it's extremely small with a telephone pole in the middle. You can't get a stroller pass, you can't get a bike pass, you can barely walk past. And I asked if sidewalks are part of the study, and they are. So.
I'll just point out, I think we're all on the same page here, for the record, that our comprehensive plan urges us to work with Montgomery, with the Lower Marion Township, specifically on Montgomery Ave. And our planning commission has reached out to us about working with Lower Marion on Montgomery Ave. So I think there's widespread recognition that this is an area where we should be working with Lower Marion.
Also, our Lower Marion and Narberth Active Transportation Plan, that's also a kind of like Montgomery Avenue corridor is a concern.
All right. On that note, let's vote to approve the Safe Streets and Roads for All grant application in partnership with Lower Marion Township. All those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. 9C, change order for roof.
I move that Borough Council approve change order number three for the 80 Windsor Roof Reinforcement Project in the amount of $6,846 for a new contract total of $474,086.
Second.
Okay. Mr. West, this one's on you.
Yep. So there was an action item request form included in tonight's package at Outlaw's request. If you recall, I mentioned this to council at a previous meeting, that some old termite damage was discovered in the American Legion side. So this change order is to repair that sill and repair the wall, and repair the wall. If you look at the change order, there's a picture of all of the repair area. And also, if you look at the change order request, most of this cost is in labor, because it's labor intensive.
Do you have any questions?
I assume the termite issue has been remediated.
Yes, they were not active. It was old termite damage. And so we did have the borough's pest, pest company come in and do a full building inspection, and they said, yeah, we could treat it. It didn't cost too much money. And they recommended not doing it, because they're like, it's old damage. It's not, they're not active.
Any other questions? Okay, we are voting, sorry, voting to approve the change order for the Windsor Avenue Roof Reinforcement for an addition of $6,846. So all those in favor? All right, it is unanimous.
And I just wanted to thank council for approving Resolution 2024-09, enabling me to approve these change orders in a timely fashion, so we can keep this project on track.
Okay. 9D is goals and objectives.
I move that Borough Council approve the prioritized list of goals and objectives for 2024, 2025.
Okay. So we were all this meeting to discuss priorities for council and for the borough for upcoming, coming what, a year and a half, I think that's our, the current council, that's it. And it's been color-coded and organized by our borough manager here. So this, there are questions. Karen Rees-Scannell asked some questions about this. This is the result of a visionary exercise where we were, like I said, planning our priorities. None of these are actions to be taken at this time, other than to announce or make clear what our goals are and what our priorities are gonna be going ahead.
I liken it to the 10,000-foot view. These are kind of overarching goals and objectives that we as a council should consider, and decisions, future decisions should be rooted in these prioritizations.
Thanks.
Does anybody have questions or comments about how these, about the one pager that has been produced here? It's gotta have been tricky to fit this all on a page, the layout work here. Yeah, all right. So let's vote to approve the prioritized list of goals and objectives. All those in favor? Okay.
We're full of grammatic pauses.
I'm cycling between two. All right, let's move on to 9E, which is Wonderspring Lease Extension.
I move that Borough Council approve the terms of the lease renewal for Wonderspring administrative or admin office space located at 2017.
Is there a second? Okay. Wonderspring is our major tenant at 2017, and at their request, we're, we have changed the terms of their lease to allow them a longer period. I'll summarize the changes on this lease. Anybody? No?
You know, the details of the lease, once approved, will be made public. That would be the best course of action.
Right. And I think that the primary, well, one of the main goals on there was to get a longer lease, is to give them more certainty, because their lease was close to running out. So we are happy to have them as tenants. Any other comments on this?
Can I say that this was the nature of the question asked by Carol Marie earlier, that, you know, that the topic on social media was how long will Wonderspring be staying in the borough? We're arriving at news to that effect.
Sure. And so we can take a look at the lease. This has a couple extensions that they can take on their own as well. So, yeah, options to extend.
And there are also options for the borough to notify them if a plan for 2017 materializes. We notify them, excuse me, that we have a notification time for that.
I believe this is for three years, with them being able to extend for two more, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, so up to five years for roof.
Yeah, for the childcare space, admin one.
All right.
Yeah, the original social media post was actually somebody who was interested in involving them in Wonderspring, and wondering whether they were gonna be there in the fall. And I think Gene was trying to assure them that, yes, based on things that we knew were, this lease extension was coming up, that the person may have a high degree of confidence that they could enroll their kid in the fall and Wonderspring would be there.
All right, any other discussion? All right, let's vote to approve the lease extension for the admin, Wonderspring Admin Office Space, 2017. All those in favor? It is unanimous. 9F, a related topic. More lease.
I move that Borough Council approve the terms of the lease renewal for Wonderspring Childcare Space located at 2017.
Is there a second?
I'll be consistent, second.
Okay. So Wonderspring rents two different spaces from us. They have for a while now. This is their main space. Any other concerns? Okay. We're voting to approve the lease extension for Wonderspring's childcare space. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Our final item is more roof reinforcements.
I move that Borough Council approve payment number one for the 80 Windsor Avenue Roof Reinforcement Project in the amount of $73,068.
Is there a second?
Self-explanatory. This is the first payment, the major capital improvement project at 80 Windsor.
And so that our, I think it was you, Eric, right, would approve for?
This is a, Yerkes Associates.
Yerkes, nevermind. My mistake.
But the, but the project is still, because of these, are granting you the change order rights, the project is still scheduled, hasn't lost it.
This is, yes. Project is still on schedule, and this is the first payment from the borough to the contract.
Yeah, just sometimes these change orders come with schedule extensions, but the boroughs have not.
Thankfully not, not yet.
Okay. Questions?
What was the expected construction in May?
Mid-June.
It's not too far.
Well, I mean, but I guess there's some discussion about painting after that, or that could be done?
Painting is a whole different conversation.
But that could be done at a different time, or it could be done off hours, or it would require the library to be closed?
Painting is a separate project.
Okay.
Right, this is the construction project. If you recall, when we bid this project, we had an ad alternate for the finishing.
Yeah.
And it was cost prohibitive, and it was actually the recommendation of our project engineer to not award that, because their belief was that we would be able to find a cheaper alternative to finish the space afterwards. So what we've done is separated the construction from the finishing. And actually, I've been working with the Narberth Borough Industrial Development Authority to work on some funding for the finishing part of it, and we're working on getting the library and other users to contribute to that cost as well. So that'll be forthcoming, just as a little, as a little seed for excitement there. I don't have the additional details yet to share.
But that would happen on a later date, because obviously you haven't bid it or awarded it.
Correct. And we want to see what it looks like once the construction is done, because there might be some additional cracks that need to be repaired, those sorts of things. So let's get it, let's get the critical repair done, and then see what it looks like.
The painter has to know what they're painting.
That's right. Yep. But all of the beams have started to go up this week, and if you are interested in more details, I did include a detailed project update in the meeting package for 80 Windsor.
Definitely pass by there often and see them work. Okay, let's vote to approve payment number one for the Windsor Roof Reinforcement Project. All those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. And the ports have been filed. Are there any new business? Old business? Comments for the good accounts?
Narberth Parks Plan, oh, go ahead. I hope to see everyone at the Memorial Day Parade. Hope you guys will join us in marching in support of this important event.
Narberth Parks Plan, survey is live, let folks know about it. The first meeting, first public, well, we've been having meetings with the committee, but the, like, public meeting, community engagement, May 29, 7:00 p.m., here.
How can people find the survey?
It's everywhere. We've been distributing it. I dropped a bunch off at the farmer's market as well, and flyers, but also narberthpa.gov/master-park-planned.
You know what, I'll also flash a QR code in the video right here.
It's in the kiosks, right? It's in the train kiosks, it's everywhere, on social media, everywhere.
Okay, so apparently it's in schools.
The flats.
So here's a question, but besides, we have already answered the survey. Come on, folks, do as I say.
That was refreshing. Right, oh, okay. That comes this, yeah, you won the award for after the meeting. Mr. Beamer.
It's Chris Almanche's call.
Any further comments for the good accounts? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourned? I give you a second. Fair enough. We'll give it a two minutes. I think a second can be used. But it'll be you. Okay, Richard?